Good evening. Thank you. We will now have Jackson White from Milliken High School lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. Put your right hand over the heart. Face the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jackson. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item that you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the Board or staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that the Board voted to approve a resignation and general release agreement with a permanent certificated teacher resolving all claims between the parties. The vote was unanimous with all members voting to approve. Call for agenda items for separate action, adoption of the agenda is posted.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion approved, four to zero. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Communications, there is none. Public testimony on items listed on the agenda today. I have two requests. First is Carol Schultz. You can come up to the microphone.
Thank you, sorry, this is my first time doing anything like this. I'm an employee of Long Beach Unified School District. I have been for the past seventeen years. I'm here with some of my colleagues who have been here as long as twenty-nine and thirty-two years. I'm here because, oh, first of all, thank you CSCA for everything you did for us in our negotiations. So, I'm one of the employees that was told yesterday that the tentative agreement between CSCA and the district was passed. Well, thank you for the very well-deserved pay increase, but unfortunately, it won't cover my new healthcare costs. So, and what I don't understand is how you give nineteen-hundred people the power to make my financial decisions because it's only affecting four hundred or so of us. And you guys haven't been very transparent about why you're doing this. Is it because the PPO costs are too high, enrollment is down, you say it's really expensive to live in Long Beach and the surrounding areas? Well, that's where we all live and we just think it's really unfair and it's going to be a really hard financial hardship for a lot of us. And I just hope that you would take that into consideration tonight when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name's Chet Davidson, CSCA Vice President, UNIB. Same thing, I just wanted to reiterate what my sister Carol had to say. We have quite a few people here, but it is a shock. It's a bittersweet moment. A lot of people that deserve that raise voted yes, and we had a record turnout. We had more than twice the amount of people that we've had come out to vote, so a very compassionate crowd. But it's just, it's a difficult situation to know that these people are affected this way. Some of the concerns I want to bring to you were they're eligible for the lowest HMO and for these people to have to switch plans and switch doctors and switch into a lowest HMO, which obviously, as these people shift into a different plan, it's going to raise utilization rates. And then, in turn, the utilization rates can raise up the HMO plan to offset the other one and within the next year, they could be going into another plan and having to find new doctors. And we definitely need to have some compassion when we're talking about these people and their families. The district protocol is to, when they do attrition, to let go of a benefited employee and hire three-point-eight-hour employees. And we obviously get what we pay for here at Long Beach Unified and it's a revolving door of people that there's nothing here for them. They're here at a low cost with no benefits. And I'd really like to continue discussion about raising the hours of these part-time employees and get these six-hour employees at a higher wage so they can afford these added costs. It was voted in. It was, it was, it was a tough vote. I mean, we're, we've got the broad prize. We're an urban district. Well, we have employees that live in this urban neighborhood and they have to survive on these low wages with these added costs. So, again, it was a very difficult eight months of negotiations and I just feel for these people that are truly affected each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chet. Staff report, there is none. Public testimony on items not listed on the agenda. I have no request. Move right into business items. Personnel, Mr. Meyer?
I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Appointments, one hundred and thirty-five. Leaves of absence, ten. Abandonment of position, one. Resignations, fourteen. Retirement, seven. Reductions, lack of work or funds, one. Amendments, three. Recisions, one. Certificated personnel, appointments, ten. In-service changes, twenty-one. Leaves of absence, one. Retirements, one. And I move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Board authorizations?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion's approved, four to zero. Coaching assignment?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
I just, this was just another round because I see that it's just Wilson. I know we did several at the last meeting, so finishes us up. Great.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Instruction?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Finance report, A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Finance report, B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in finance report B on the consent calendar of a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and 87100. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved, three to zero with one recusal. Business department report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Purchasing and contract report?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Actually, I just wanted to point out at number four, so we're continuing year two of our collaboration with the Long Beach Fire Department Junior Lifeguard Program. So, this will cover the prep classes for selective students at Cabrillo High School and Jordan High School. So, there is a two-minute time test for students who want to be in the Junior Lifeguard Program. I believe they have to swim a four-hundred in under two minutes. And what these Saturday classes allow students to do is to come onto campus for free and to practice swimming so that by the time the final test date rolls around, as many kids as possible will have qualified. So, I appreciate the good work and the budget allotment once again.
Thank you, Megan. Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion approved, four to zero. Superintendent items, student discipline?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, staff recommends expulsion of the following student, student six-one-zero. This student would be expelled under Education Codes 48915A2 and 48900A1 and would not be eligible to apply for re-admission until after June 11th of 2020. However, staff recommends a suspended expulsion with the assignment to our GOC program.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion approved, four to zero. Unfinished business, there is none. New business? Adoption of tentative agreements, California School Employee Association, Long Beach Chapter Two, Units A and B?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved, four to zero. Kids Club tuition increase, Chris?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board, due to increased cost, we are recommending that the Kids Club's cost go, the hourly tuition rate go from six to seven dollars an hour and from forty-five dollars a day during the summer and winter breaks to fifty dollars a day and that the initial paperwork file goes from one-twenty-five to one-fifty. You can see the last time we raised rates was in 2018 and these rates, if approved by the Board, are still way under the similar childcare providers in our community. This is so that they will not run into a deficit.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
So, the second sheet, so the backside of that page lists a couple of different childcare programs. Is that just for comparison's sake?
Correct, those are, yes.
Okay.
And it goes into, in fact, the fall of twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's approved, four to zero. Approval of updated list of moving and storage services firms?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion's approved, four to zero. Award of lease, leaseback contract for the Bryant Elementary School HVAC project,
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Board members and staff. So, today, we're presenting to you the award of a lease-leaseback contract for Bryant Elementary School. So, way back on March the first of 2017, the Board approved Resolution Number 030117-B, which established procedures for evaluating the qualifications of lease-leaseback contractors in accordance with Section 17400 and 17406 of the Education Code. Following the adoption of those procedures, staff released solicitations to interested firms to work on our construction program and provide lease-leaseback construction services following the adopted guidelines. A total of eleven firms submitted qualifications to work on our program. Those firms were evaluated using the procedures that were established in the Board Resolution and of those nine firms were selected to be eligible, pre-qualified to work on those grouping of projects, of which Bryant was one of them. We brought those nine firms to the Board back on July the sixteenth of 2018 to adopt those firms. Following the adoption of that back on April of 2019, April 23rd, the district issued a request for proposals to those firms. We received four proposals from that list of nine firms to perform the Bryant Elementary School project. We evaluated those proposals in accordance with the established procedures, which included evaluations of things such as the overall cost of the project, things such as the strength of the firm's individual staff members that are proposing to work on the project, the cost of the contractor's overhead and profit markup that they would make on the project, things such as the cost of the financing associated with the project, the strength of the individual firm's local hire and local outreach programs that they provided to us, and their experience with similar type of work in the industry and within our own program as we worked with these firms to execute our projects. So, following a very robust evaluation from our facilities team and based on the strength of the firm, we selected Tilden Coil Contractors as the best value to the district to be able to perform the Bryant Elementary School project. Following that selection, our staff worked with that firm to negotiate the guaranteed maximum cost for the project. Working with Tilden Coil, the total contract cost for this is seven million, five-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-and-seventy-seven dollars. So, today, we're presenting that to you with a recommendation to award a contract to Tilden Coil Contractors to perform the HVAC modernization project for Bryant Elementary School.
Thank you, Alan.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Can I take this moment just to thank you and your crew for the great work you're doing in our schools? For example, Mann Elementary School and Willard, two schools I just recently visited, the folks are just ecstatic about the outstanding work that you've been doing, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thank you.
That doesn't include a raise though, Alan.
No, no, no. More work, that's okay, I love you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion's approved. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
We are now into report of Board members and starting off with our student Board member, Jackson White from Milliken.
Good evening, Superintendent Steinhauser, Board members and staff. My name is Jackson White. I'm a part of the ASB business at Milliken and I'm currently serving as the Communications Officer and I am running for Senior Class President this year. To start, over the summer, we went on an ASB camp with McBride, Lakewood, and Renaissance to the Irvine Recreational Center and this experience was a great way to kick off our year and it really helped us to learn important networking and team-building skills. We began the school year with our new administration, including Vice Principal Ms. Kaisha Irving and Assistant Principals Ms. Macy Jelenowicz, Ms. Erin Filer, and Mr. Daniel Yu. They have been a great addition to our Ram family and we are thankful for their hard work in their new positions. This year, our homecoming had the theme of nineties with the name Talk to the Ram Nineties Throwback. We had an exciting spirit week with fun dress-up days themed around the nineties. Each day had a large photo backdrop which was created by our ASB creative class and students had a lot of fun taking pictures in front of it. We kicked off our activities with a night rally with over a thousand free tickets given out and we are very thankful to be able to have the funds to host these kind of free events to relieve a little stress from our students. Our homecoming carnival was also a blast and we had over fifty clubs participating in hosting a booth to fundraise for their club. I am also happy to announce that our Focus Wellness Center is now open where we have peer mentors to help during unscheduled periods nutrition and lunch just for students to relax or if they need to talk to someone in a time of need. This week, Milliken was honored to host the School Outstanding Growth Awards and our ASB creative team had met with Dr. Jill Baker ahead of the event where she discussed her vision. The creative team spent countless hours working to make sure the event went perfect and worked with her vision of creating a festive environment. During after-school workshops, the creative team made three different photo backdrops and decorations to give our auditorium a festive feel. Our creative class was very proud of how it went and we look forward to possibly hosting future events. Today, we finished our Rams for Yams drive where we asked every third-period class to bring in as many canned yams for the Long Beach Basket Brigade. The class that brought in the most was able to win a donut party and that'll be hosted tomorrow. Milliken students were able to bring in over four hundred cans and we always enjoy being able to give back to our community with more jives planned for the future. Along with helping our community, right now, we are also celebrating Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Pancreatic cancer is near and dear to the Milliken community after losing two teachers, Ms. Jean Davis and Mr. Bob Brigham this year. We had two tie-dye parties where students were able to tie-dye a Milliken mob shirt for five dollars to wear on Fridays in November and the proceeds were donated to the Pancreatic Cancer Association Network. Tomorrow, we will be celebrating World Pancreatic Cancer Day and encouraging all students and staff to show their support by wearing purple head to toe. Lastly, I would like to thank our high school office and Superintendent Steinhauser for always valuing student life and student activities. Recently, our class of twenty-eighteen senior video went viral on YouTube with three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand views currently. Many of the comments discussed how they wished for the type of movie-like high school experience we have. While this may seem normal to most Long Beach students, seeing these comments have made us realize how lucky we are to have a district that constantly supports our events and activities and we are very grateful for these. Thank you, Superintendent Steinhauser, Board members and staff for allowing me to speak this evening, and I would also like to thank our Activities Director, Ms. Itzen, who could not be here tonight. She is constantly working endless hours to make sure we have an amazing high school experience and is always looking to see how we can improve the future. Thank you.
Sound like a campaign speech to me. Tell us, you're a senior, right? So, what plans do you have for college?
I am applying to three Cal States, Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Fullerton, and San Luis Obispo, and then four UCs, UCLA, Berkeley, Irvine, and Santa Barbara, and then also Stanford.
So, how do you feel that your education in the district has prepared you for any of that kind of an opportunity?
Being at Milliken and also being a part of Quest has really just paved the way for me to explore my career interests. Right now, I'm currently in this Quest senior project and I'm able to explore the interest I have, which is computer engineering, and I look forward to moving forward with that.
Thank you so much. Excellent presentation, Jackson.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Kerr?
So, the thing about moving to this side is that I have to follow the students. I might have to move back next time.
That's okay.
But it's always great to hear what's going on on campuses and I hope folks notice, other than those of us in the room or who are used to hearing it, that student board members always include the work that they're doing for the greater community. There is always a community engagement piece, there is always a service piece, and so while you have people who are jealous of your somewhat idyllic, as they say, movie-like experience, we know that it's so much more than that and the impact that you as students have within our city is pretty phenomenal, from cancer research to cans of yams, whatever it is because it's different every month and at every school. But I'm so grateful for the work that you guys do as students to make sure that what's happening on your campus doesn't just stay on your campus.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that. I just want to give a shout-out to our Jordan School Psychologist, Madeya Cervantes, who earned Outstanding School Psychologist Award from the California Association of School Psychologists. She won the Nadine M. Lambert Outstanding School Psychologist Award for Region Five or South and East LA County, one of the largest regions in the state, and she recently accepted this award. She's been instrumental in creating the Jordan Wellness Center, a place on campus for, to support, guide, and provide counseling services to students as well as make sure they have some of their daily essentials if they're missing those. She does parent education, access to community resources, an all-around fabulous person and we know we've replicated that program now at least at one other school and parts of it at multiple schools. So, congratulations to Madeya for continually serving our students so well. I wanted to thank the Port of Long Beach for their annual Women in Trade Luncheon, which was held last week at the Maya. They bring in about a hundred and fifty young women from high schools throughout Long Beach. So, all of our high schools and St. Anthony as well is represented in the room and they bring together women in the goods movement industry and so they have folks there from the port, obviously, and our own program at Cabrillo High School, but as well as the Coast Guard. At my table, I had an engineer from the port and a project manager. I also had someone from Mattson Land Company who they basically store containers and goods throughout the city and in Carson and they have land everywhere. So, another opportunity for young women to see themselves in what might be considered a non-traditional job area, so I want to thank the port for their ninth annual Women in Trade Luncheon. I'll give a special shout-out to the Green Summit and to Hughes and for Rogers Green Team and Grades of Green and all of those folks who you've seen come to our meetings probably for about two years now, encouraging us to do better, to do more, to solidify our policies in actual policy language. They hosted the Green Summit at Hughes. Couple hundred folks came. We had students there, we had teachers there, we had parents there. I actually got two separate text messages from folks whose families had attended and they were ready to do the work on their own campuses. So, for all that great leadership and work, I commend you. I know Lucy Flores also had a hand in helping make our community partnerships happen on that day too, so thank you to everyone involved. I'll leave the K-12 School Growth Celebration, which was amazing, to my colleagues. I want to thank the parents who show up monthly at our D-LAC and D-CAC meetings. I stopped in at the D-LAC meeting at MLK Park and after two informative presentations, it was time for coffee and pastries and a community-building activity. The idea that relationships aren't just between our staff members and our students on campuses, but that building relationships with our parents is all in the name of supporting student success and family wellness. So, thanks to our great Parent University team who knocks it out of the park every time and are there answering questions and fielding questions for parents who are concerned and parents who are excited to support their students in new ways. And the last thing, just, today is the Transgender Day of Remembrance. It's, I believe, the twentieth annual day of remembering the violence perpetrated against our trans community members, our trans brothers and sisters and gender non-conforming brothers and sisters. And we know that for young people who identify in those ways, they have increased rates of depression, suicidality, and victimization. And so, a shout-out to our Student Support Services team who help us do better every day to support our students in the ways that we need to and to call us to do better when we need to. There is an event tonight at six-thirty at Harvey Milk Park for anyone interested in going to really reflect on the work and the resiliency of our trans community and honor those who lost their lives this year. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Ms. Quigg?
Okay. I guess I'll start my report with Veterans Day celebrations, the Friday before the Veterans Day holiday. The morning started out for me at Bixby Elementary and our principal, Mr. Sam Platus, does a great job of bringing together members of the community, veterans who are related to the students, and showing the kids how to honor veterans. And then, later in the morning, headed over to Twain where they were holding their thirteenth annual Veterans Day celebration and Spud O'Neil was the keynote speaker at that event. He is a baseball coach at Lakewood, I think the most, more league wins. I don't know if you could help me with that one, but anyhow, he, sorry, put you on the spot.
We don't need any help.
Oh, okay. And Mr. Spud O'Neil is also a recipient of the Purple Heart, so he spoke to the kids not just as a winning baseball coach, but as a veteran and he told the kids that everything they were doing that morning, from the Pledge of Allegiance to honoring the veterans, was something that made him very happy and that meant a lot to him and the veterans there. At Bixby, we had one veteran that was ninety, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety, somewhere in there. He, up until a couple of years ago, was teaching somewhere in LA.
LA Trade Tech.
Yeah, LA Trade Tech. At the Twain event, there was a ninety-six-year-old veteran being honored, Mr. Maximino Buendia, and it was really exciting to have veterans there from World War II, from World War II. They honored veterans from the decades, they had people stand and I, yeah, I think that was just very exciting. I'm glad to have them around. And one of the things I appreciate at Twain, they have all the kids sing, so the kindergarteners start by singing Yankee Doodle Dandy and then the upperclassmen sing all the songs associated with the different branches of the military. So, by the time you're a fifth grader, you know every song and can join in. It's wonderful. So, thank you to all those people who put that together. I know our chairperson for the event, I think she's done it the last four years, is retiring because her son is a fifth grader, so congratulations to Elizabeth Payne. Lakewood football was in the CIF quarterfinals last week. It was a home game, so that made it real easy to support them. I appreciated that. I know, close by. Where our other teams had to travel, Wilson and Polly had to travel, but Lakewood was playing at home Friday night. It was a good game, they played hard, but alas... It was a good game, they played hard, but alas, did not prevail. The Green Summit, I just wanted to add a couple of things. When the leaders were, when our green team leaders were talking about reducing food waste, what they said was that feeding kids is their first responsibility, their first goal, and that's why they have things like a share table. If one student doesn't want something, they put food on a share table so another student can come and get that food and that's really a priority. And then having less food waste is secondary to all that, but really great things that happened. Also, our very generous superintendent gave a $5,000 stipend to our green teams and they were stunned. I don't think that's an understatement, if you saw their faces, they were stunned to be receiving money. And Mrs. Weinstein from Rogers, the green team, green team leader there, told me that now she doesn't have to collect bottles and cans to collect those pennies to earn money for her group, now she's got some money to work with, so it's very much appreciated. So thank you to our superintendent for, for doing that. Also, in the same day, was a documentary being shown at the Art Theater, it was called Love Them First. We had a small group, but we had community members, we had parents, we had, I think we had a couple of teachers or administrators there, and this was a documentary about an inner-city school in Minneapolis and how one principal came in and really changed lives and basically put the priority on giving attention to the kids, attention, affection, and seeing each student as an individual with needs other than, you know, the obvious need of being educated. It was really impactful and I'm hoping that we can bring that back and maybe show it on a more wide-scale, in a more broad way and we'll maybe talk about that. Let's see, our school growth celebration was fabulous, so thank you to the creative team at Milliken. It was beautiful, there was an actual red carpet, there were lights, there, you know, it was so festive. I, what I really loved about it was that we are able to acknowledge not just the administrators, but teams of administrators with their teachers, and I think that was really well-received because I know in the beginning of the year, we do a kickoff to the new school year, it's called the Managers Meeting, and we bring together the principals and administrators, executive staff, that kind of thing. It's kind of like a before-the-school-year pep rally. This one felt very different because we had teams of people from the different schools and we were acknowledging their growth in math, English Language Arts, and closing the achievement gap. And so we're really able to acknowledge those schools that are doing well in those areas. It was very energizing, fabulous, so thank you to everybody who put that together, that was really wonderful. And then finally, I'm just going to wrap it up by saying, I popped into one of my elementary schools this morning, I was at, well, I was at a couple of them, but I popped into Prisk and I went to the office and I asked for the principal and I was told that the principal was not available, so I was trying to make some other arrangements, when I could come back and I call, you know, when's a good time. And finally, when I pressed the, the front office staff, I was told that the principal indeed was on campus, but she was being taped up in the cafeteria. Taped up in the cafeteria. That was her promise to the kids, if they raised a certain amount of money for their STEAM aids, if any child raised more than 200, 200 or more, then they were able to add a piece of duct tape. So you have to picture this fabulous principal, and let me tell you, our principals are the best, they do anything for their schools and their kids. So the principal is standing on a stool up against the wall and each, each student who raised $200 or more had a length of duct tape and they got to put it up against the principal, up against the wall. So many kids, in fact, raised more than $200 for this cause, stuck that principal to the wall, so the big ceremony was removing the stool and honestly, I just popped in, this was not even, I was not invited for obvious reasons, but, you know, being maybe somebody who could have said, "No." But the big moment was, did she stick to the wall?
Yeah, boy.
Can I tell you something? They raised more than $55,000, you better believe she was stuck to that wall. And then I stayed long enough to see her come down. So that was very fun, but that just demonstrates to me, and I've seen, I've seen principals kiss a pig, I've seen them, you know, get pelted by water, all kinds of crazy things to motivate their students. Sometimes it's tied to, you know, test scores, other things, attendance. Our principals work so hard and this fact gets, you know, I don't, I come to realize this fact over and over and over again when I'm at a school, in the evening, before, you know, school starts in the morning. Our principals are the first ones there and the last ones to leave. They have to deal with us, they have to deal with the parents, the teachers, the students, everybody. So I just want to take this opportunity, and don't get on my case because it's a shorter meeting and I've taken a long time, but I haven't done this in a long time, but I just want to take this opportunity to thank our principals and our teachers and everybody who puts in all the time because that's what makes things work. Thanks.
Diana, I don't want to pin you down, but kissing a pig?
Yeah, that happened.
Wow.
What, Jay, you did that?
Jay did, huh?
Oh.
Thank you, Jay.
We'll find out how true that is later, Jay.
Sure, I thought it was cooked. It's okay, go sit.
Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Just a punctuation on the Outstanding Growth Awards at Milliken High School, muddy afternoon. If you will allow me to reflect on 58 years, teacher, coach, administrator, board member, it was the most uplifting experience I've ever participated in, in the Long Beach Unified School District. There were students there, parents, community supporters, teachers, administrators, and it's the kind of thing that we need to celebrate more often. It was so well-done and so uplifting, so thank you, Dr. Baker and all of your crew who are involved with that, that was just fabulous. Eighteen elementary schools were recognized, ten middle K-8 schools, and seven high schools, so that's a large percentage of our schools. Good work out there, teachers, staff, and principals for all that you've done. Was a great delight recently to attend the NAACP banquet. Dr. Felton C. Williams, PhD, was recognized and with quite an honor as the Education and Civil Rights Award of the Night, and I must tell you once again, he's been my colleague for the past 16 years. I have never seen a board member work the community on behalf of the best interests of our students, anyone better than Dr. Williams has. He has the wherewithal to do things the rest of us don't have the ability to do, so thank you very much, Dr. Williams, for all that you've done. Lastly, and I think you all know this, but we're concerned about safety. When you go to one of our schools now, to get in the front door, you need to press a buzzer, then an audio comes on and you identify yourself, and if everything's look all right, and I'll get to that, the door opens. When you go in the office, then there is a visual screen in the office, so not only do they hear you identify yourself, they can see who you are before you are admitted. So I praise the Long Beach Unified School District, our superintendent and all for the extent we go to, to keep our schools safe. Thank you.
Thank you, John, very much. My colleagues have pretty much reported on all the things that I was going to talk about, but just to recap, on the Bixby Veterans Day, the gentleman that Diana referred to was such an interesting individual, very charismatic, and very willing to tell the story about all the military adventures that he has gone through, and you don't have to press him hard, I mean, he just comes right out. Very delightful gentleman, very delightful gentleman, a veteran of World War II and the Vietnam War. And, and one of the last things he said to me was, "If you want to invite me to one of your board meetings, I'll be happy to come," so, that's for Chris. The School Growth Award, Dr. Baker, Level Offices, and Executive Staff, as I reflected and mentioned to Chris today, seeing that celebration, recognition of all the things that have transpired over the course of the years in this district to move us to that point, and being able to see so many of our, our school people come in and celebrate that special occasion was very heartwarming. You know, beyond the fact that it's a, it's a celebration, but more than that, it's a recognition that so many people in this district believe very much in the growth and development of all of our students. That's what, to me, was most heartwarming, and the fact that we were able to celebrate it in that fashion was very heartwarming. And the video presentation, just kudos to OMS, good job, folks, for the work that you do each and every day. Superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd just like to share two things. One, I do want to commend Dr. Baker and the team for the program on Monday. It was a great example of what makes Long Beach special, as I commented to several board members. There aren't many school districts around where you're going to see such appreciation and people hugging the board members and staff and, and to see, like you said, Mr. Meyer, parents there and so on, so it's another example of what makes this place special. I think sometimes we take it for granted what makes this place special. We have a lot of work to do and we could have 80 schools in that movie, Mrs. Craighead, because I would argue that all of our schools love their students first to, and then do what they need to do. It's not just about test scores. And to Jackson, I want to share with you, you know, we have the best job in the world because we get to go visit all these schools and we follow you folks on social media, and it is, as Mrs. Kerr said, when students in other schools see the great things happen at one school, they replicate those at their schools. Prime example is the Kindness Challenge that you folks started a couple of years ago that is just now spread as a good fire throughout the system, so I can't thank you enough for what you and all the students in this community do because it, we are in great hands for the future, and a prime example is what you put together under Dr. Baker's vision for the Outstanding Growth Awards. So whether it's a celebratory or whether it's something to make this world a better place, we can't thank you enough because we want you to all take good care of us as we retire and get older, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We are now at announcements.
Act One.
Go ahead.
I do, save the date. So our Harmony Project, our annual gala is happening on December 11th, and we used to have it in the foyer of the Terrace Theater, and I am excited to realize that we have outgrown the foyer and we are now in the Pacific Ballroom. So we have so many musicians and their families who come and join us for that wonderful night that is a fundraiser to help support the program. You guys should all join us. Wednesday, December 11th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Pacific Ballroom. You can RSVP to us at the Harmony Project, we can't wait to see you there.
Thank you very, very much for that. Any other announcements?
Yes, I would just like to add a congratulations to our Dr. Tiffany Brown because she was honored by the nonprofit organization, NABUSE, for her fabulous work with our students. So in a public way, I just want to thank you so much because we love the work that you do.
All right. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Salute.
All right, stay here, we're going to do a photo op.
Oh, photo op, okay.
We are adjourned.